On the table.
All set.
Welcome, everyone, to the March 2nd, 2021 regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council. I'll call the meeting to order and I will lead the pledge tonight. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Naomi, please call the roll.
Mayor Hootsclaw.
Present.
Mayor Protem Vanel.
Here.
Councilmember Bond.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Briles.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Thank you. That brings us to audience communication. Would anyone like to speak to the council tonight? Barbara trying to reach on mute? Okay. See, anyone else care to speak to the council? Seeing none and hearing none, we'll move on to the presentations. Michael, you have the next two items. First is the proclamation regarding the emergency extension.
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. What we're asking for, City Council, to move to confirm the extension of the city manager's emergency proclamation through April 6th, 2021. I believe our city attorney Grant has added a few items to the proclamation. We just wanted to inform council that before we proceed, hopefully, to a vote.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the proclamation? Any questions, comments, discussion? Councilmember Steckler.
I'm sorry, I'm having a problem with my iPad getting in, but so I looked earlier, I did see the proclamation. I just can't look at it right now. I had a question about this, if we extend this. My concern was the, is there any way that we can open up the passport office opportunity to people following PPE protocols and safety guidelines, even if we're in an emergency situation? I hate to continue to keep that closed. We've kept it closed for such a long period of time. But my concern is, does that mean we have to open up everything? I'm just curious about that. Is there any way that we can move ahead with the passport operations?
Yep. Mayor, to the chair, if I might answer, Councilman Steckler, we are absolutely on the same page. What I'm looking at above all else is how to recontinue the, reinitiate revenue streams back in the city hall. We're doing that with all the caution that's been, we've been directed to by our employment council. I will tell you that right now, we're working on some additional physical structural improvements, such as partitioning between the service counters, potentially being able to work both on the police department window as well as city hall administrative windows where we've erected the Plexiglas. We're looking to do this on an appointment-only basis. We are staging right now, and I want to emphasize to the community that we're not expecting to open in two weeks, but we are staging as if we were to open in two weeks so that we can ensure ourselves that we will be absolutely ready as soon as we're able to open. There's some additional employee health-related concerns, which I will not articulate publicly, but those are being addressed as we speak, so that both our staff and the community can be assured that if they're able to come to city hall, they'll be able to do so in a manner that's safe for everyone involved. We're also looking and planning to minimize the presence of the public in the building, except once all of the paperwork and the screening that's possible has been done offsite. And whether it would be by appointment only or in some sort of a service basis similar to what we did before we had a forced closure in March, we give them the opportunity to go into the community, hopefully shop on Main Street elsewhere, and then we would call them when we were ready. But the goal is to only be able to have people in the building that have business here and while balancing that desire to re-initiate normalcy around here against the continued health concerns that have been expressed by our employees. So.
Perfect.
Aware that there are supermarkets that are open, there's many, many other public places that are currently open. So there's a number of competing balancing interests that we're doing now in order to achieve that goal. It's uppermost in our awareness, sir.
So extending the proclamation does not preclude you from moving ahead, if possible, with proper safety protocols of reopening the passport services?
Right now, it would, but the beauty of the frequency of our meetings is that although we're staging for two weeks, that's more of an internal exercise. We would have an opportunity to come to council to explicitly get the permission of council to do that before we would.
Okay, okay, I understand.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay? Just out of curiosity?
Yeah.
So I'm going to support the 30-day extension one more time. I think we have, it's been a year and we've kind of hit our limit. A city manager just touched on it a second ago about supermarkets and other public facilities and areas being open. I watched a group of folks the other day playing soccer at Arena Sports, so there is a degree of normalcy out there, but it's, but not here. So the people's house, they should have access to it. I won't be supporting any more extensions at this point and advocating the opposite. So I think this is kind of putting us on a time clock, I know, but we've had a year to kind of figure it out. The parameters by the governor have been set to 25%. Looking right at the sign, at this room here, and city hall holds 78 occupants. So that means 19 of us can probably get in here at any given time. It can be done, and I think we should be doing it. And so I just wanted to say that and get that out there. But I do support it for 30 days, but I want that to be used as valuable time to put the components in place to get us back. Thank you.
Grant, a question for you. Is there some language, is there a language we could add so that in the event something changes short of 30 days from the governor's office that would, we could give the authority to open up without having to come back and deal with this proclamation again?
Well, it's, may not be expressed, but it is implied because that is what has been set forth in the concurrent resolutions of the House and the State House and the State Senate when they approved the extensions of the governor's proclamations. It said until the, it continued it until the emergency was over or until it was changed by the governor. So we have that. We could add language expressly, I suppose, to incorporate that concept. But clearly, if, if city hall was ready to open ahead of time where circumstances accelerated in the next 30 days, we can certainly come back to council and reopen it. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Maybe I misheard the answer to Councilmember Steckler's question. I want to make sure, like Vince and John, that if we're allowed to, we have the ability, the city manager has the authority to open back up without having to come back to us.
We could, we could revise the language somewhat to, to say that expressly, if you, if you wish.
Well, is it, I heard someone say that it wasn't authorized expressly or impliedly. If it's implied in this language and everyone understands that the city manager has that authority, then I'm comfortable. Wait, do you think it's provided?
Well, the, it states specifically at the last paragraph, I think, that it would, the city hall would remain closed until April 6th. So that's the language that we could add a qualifier to say, or until such time as, as it is otherwise deemed safe. Right now, the city could, under Phase 2, have city hall open for a council meeting, but we have the express limitations on the number of people that can be in city hall. And we would also have to abide by all of the protocols that we discussed a few weeks ago. So while it is technically legally possible, there are a number of steps that would have to be taken that are not in the usual course of business in order to do it now. So if there, if, if you wanted to state that the city manager can withdraw the emergency proclamation ahead of 30 days, we would have to identify what the circumstances were, which would permit that.
Could it be, simply be written, the closure is in effect through April 6th, 2021, unless otherwise provided by the governor or unless otherwise authorized by the state, something to that effect?
We could say unless otherwise changed by amendments to the governor's proclamation.
Anyone else have any thoughts? Councilmember Steckler.
Could we say at the discretion of the city manager for a period of up to 30 days? Not to exceed 30 days? Goes along with Councilmember Cavallari's thought, gives it the power to the city manager, but not, it's at his discretion up to not to exceed 30 days?
Yeah, I like, I like that. Councilmember Steckler, I think I like that language because that provides that flexibility. I think that's a good way of doing. Just want to pull up the proclamation so we can get the language. But I would say up to 30, up to 30 days. Because I believe it says right now, it's for 30 days.
Right.
So we could add that. We could add that provision.
I don't see in the actual, the further paragraph, the last full paragraph, I don't see it referencing 30 days. It simply says until a date specific.
Until August 6th.
It says the closure is in effect through April 6th, 2021, and we could add unless circumstances permit, unless at the discretion of the city manager's circumstances permit, opening ahead of that date.
Yeah, my, my recommendation was to take out the April 6th date and just make it at the, at the city manager's discretion for a period not to exceed or up to 30 days. That's about the same. We're on May, I mean, March 2nd right now.
Yeah. And the way it's written, it's, you know, it's going to be signed by the city manager, but this is, this is the city council affirming it. So I would say if we added, if we just changed the last sentence to say the closure and is, is in effect through April 6th, 2021, until, unless it is determined that reopening is permissible before that date. So I would just add a clause at the end.
Councilmember Briles, thank you for raising your yellow hand.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to point out, there's 35 days from now until April 6th. So if we were to say any number in particular, we ought to use that if we were allowing up through that. Or, as I think Grant was pointing out, just through a specific date makes it clear.
Well, I don't have a calendar in front of me. I assume the date is our first meeting in April.
That's correct.
It is.
It is.
Yeah, I like the language that you were suggesting, Grant, leaving the date, but giving the language, giving the flexibility for an earlier opening if circumstances allow at the city manager's discretion.
Okay. So I would recommend that the language be stated as the closure is in effect through April 6th, 2021, unless circumstances permit an earlier opening.
I'll make that motion with those changes.
Second it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the proclamation as amended, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Did anyone abstain? Motion passes seven, nothing. Thank you. We will move on to the Public Works Maintenance Team update. Michael and Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is really an exciting time for us to celebrate new leadership here at city hall. Although, when I first came on board, I knew Matthew Combs as one of the workers in the public maintenance team. It was obvious to me that this was someone that had leadership potential within our organization. And as circumstances provided, approximately six months ago, I appointed Matthew Combs to the position he currently occupies as the Public Works Supervisor for the city of Mill Creek. In the last six months, as you'll see in a slideshow, there's been a tremendous amount of work accomplished under Matthew's leadership with a very impressive team of individuals, some of whom first now had an opportunity to shine with his new direction. This was all done while there were challenges and transition issues with leadership within the Public Works Department generally. And Matthew provided a stabilizing force early to, to anchor the department and to help it accomplish its goals during COVID-19 and beyond. Councilman Cavallari just recently commented on the retrofitting in the council chambers. That is only a small, small fraction of the things that his team is required to do in these unprecedented times. So in, in providing introduction, I wanted to share with you, just personalize Matthew Combs for the, for the community and for the council. I learned a long time ago, not only his grandfather, but his father and Matthew himself are Marines, United States Marine Corps. He joined the Marine Corps in 2002, right after he graduated from high school, signing up early at age 17 through the delayed entry program. Prior to that, he worked in, in high school upholstery, working in upholstery and carpentry. It's something that he and I share in common. As he moved into the Marine Corps, he specialized in small arms weapon systems, serving in Bosnia, following then by two tours in Iraq. He was a part of and led many multiple, multiple combat missions, mostly throughout the Al Anbar province of Iraq. He was designated as platoon sergeant, as a corporal. Since his honorable discharge, he served 10 years as a machinist. He had a lead position within six months at two separate shops, the shop foreman at one of them. He's also a certified commercial driver. He's got a background in many, many different fields, worked two and a half years, for example, in the shipyards along Puget Sound. We are very lucky to have Matthew on our team and the, the transformation that he is leading in our Public Works team now and the can-do attitude that all of his team have brought to their work is nothing short of impressive and personally inspirational to me in coming to work and seeing a shift, a real shift that's occurring in our community. So in this introduction today, my intention is for us to not only convey to you as the council and our community the bang you're getting for your taxpayer dollar, but how the decisions you've made in our budget have impacted the community and the work we're doing and the results and the high standards of achievement that we're holding ourselves to as leaders, managers and supervisors in this organization. So without further ado, I want to turn the floor over to Matthew Combs to report to the council and the community on what's been going on in Public Works for the last six months. Matthew?
Thank you, city manager, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and other council members. Bear with me while I share my screen. Okay, come on. Of course, it's not working now.
We practiced, honest, we did.
There you go.
There you go, Matt.
Awesome. Okay. No, we're good. Support, he's always on it. Okay, so let's get started. This will be the Public Works Project and Task Overview presented by myself, as city manager said, Matthew Combs. There's four critical team members on the Public Works crew, Jason, Jaden, Tracy and Josh. Just right out of the gate, you know, these, these folks have lives outside of work, just like everybody else does. But I want to highlight a couple of things. Whenever anything happens within the city, these are the four guys that, that come in, you know, whether it's one person or the full crew, depending on the event. Somebody is always available. These guys care about the community and maintaining safe play areas is high on their priority list. We have a weekend rotation, so work doesn't just stop on Fridays and start on Mondays. These guys come in, they have a rotation every weekend, somebody's here on site, going through the parks or going down the trail, making sure that everything is, one, not covered in graffiti and two, if there's anything that needs to be addressed on that particular day, they can handle it. Storms always bring a special element, depending on that storm. It could be anything from trees that fall to inches or a foot of snow on the ground. These guys, I just, I can't, I can't say enough how valuable they are and how much of an asset they are to the city. They spend days on end, depending on the event, working tirelessly, day and night, to either remove snow or clear trees or do everything possible to stop flooding. All these events have happened in the last three years and, and all three years, they have been unstoppable. They've been on point. There's a need around every corner. I want to highlight the street sign restoration program that we have going right now. It's been several years since the cleaning campaign has really taken place throughout the city. What I've done is I broke the city up into different segments and we're focusing on, on the street signs in each segment area by area. Of course, as signs come down throughout the city, we'll divert from our schedule to address anything that is going on. Car accidents don't stop because I tell them to. Kids like to take signs, I'm assuming it's kids, like to just pull the signs off the top of posts and hang them in their garage or whatever. So we're always available to take care of those issues as they come up. One thing you can see on the left is, is kind of a before and during photo of one of the signs leading to one of our parks. That is just an example of the time lapse that has gone on since this operation has, has been conducted. And on the right, you can see that many signs throughout the city are actually starting to fade and some of them are even non-existent, or you can't tell what they say anymore. We really appreciate it when the community is, is able to report these things into us because it puts us on our radar, puts them on our radar, and we're able to address them at a faster pace. COVID-19, everybody, I think, is aware of COVID-19 and what it is. It made headlines in late February or early March of 2020. The governor issued the first stay-home order on March 23rd, which for us, all the employees that could work from home and continue to work from home with a very limited time spent in city hall, public works like police and fire is considered essential personnel. The city doesn't just stop because of a virus or pandemic or flood or snow. The Public Works team has continued to provide support to the city. We've installed signs at the parks that outline what the governor's mandates are specifically, limiting gatherings to five people, nobody outside your home. I think they've changed. And as they change, we update the signs accordingly. We've installed air purification throughout city hall, both buildings. It's a Remy Halo Hydroperoxide Air Purification System. What it does, it uses UV lights to kill germs and it actually helps other pollutants coagulate so they can be caught in the HVAC filtration system during recirculation. Part of preparation for allowing the community back into city hall would be, one, we installed the UV light systems. We've upgraded our filters to Merv 13s, which is actually a step above what the manufacturer recommends. We're hoping to bring those back to maintain our HVAC system better as the pandemic lifts, if that even is a thing. We installed a hard surface flooring in the police department. That was actually a real fun one. We had a time crunch to get that done. We pulled up all the carpet and put down ropey rubber floor, which is easier to clean. It's easier, you could, rather than running a vacuum or a steamer, it's just a mop. And we've been able to reduce contaminants, contaminants that stick to officers' boots as they come in. Seeing as how they are not always in the particularly cleanest environments, this was a very necessary step for them. We, as has been mentioned before, we fabricated and installed the Plexiglas partitions for each council seat. We're not sure when the council will fully be back in the chambers, but we want to be ready. Veteran recognition. Veterans Day and Memorial Day, both those days didn't take a break during 2020. And I personally am really proud of what we were able to put out there in honor of both of those days. These two days made a great deal to me, having served, and I'm happy with how everything came together. We added a couple of new things. For Memorial Day, you guys may have noticed the cross flags with the eternal flame. The eternal flame is actually something really special. I worked on that myself. And I think it says, it means a lot to our, to our setup here. For Veterans Day, we constructed a display to show the military uniforms, both past and present. Now, all of the uniforms that are up there on display were actually lent to the city by employees that are veterans themselves. Public Works and the Communications and Marketing Department worked together and both departments spent a lot of time and a lot of energy to make these things happen. I would like to make a special thanks to the Citizen Patrol and the students from Silver Lake and Mill Creek Elementarys. We are proud to display their pictures and letters with what we were calling or referring to as our reverse parade. State Route 527 right-of-way clearing. That is a, that is a very substantial project. So substantial. I had all four crew members out there working on that for five days straight and we have another five days to go. But what they've been able to accomplish is, is, in my opinion, just shy miraculous. It started with the retirement community digging in and clearing their own area of the right-of-way. And then we followed that up with our own version of clearing the right-of-way, which it's in line with what they did. But there's a couple of things that I wanted to point out. You know, first, the, the whole reason for doing this, or the main reason, I should say, is for safety of pedestrians walking along that sidewalk that goes along the northbound lanes of 527. Sight distance between the highway and the sidewalk matters. And I don't know if anybody's driven by, but as you drive by now, you can clearly see the bridge that is located on the other side of the median from 527. Is now viewable because of the removal of the invasive species, otherwise known as blackberries. There's a lot of blackberries throughout the city and we'll be working continuously to mitigate the threat that they provide. Fire suppression upgrades in city hall. This is a pretty big one. Years ago, new offices were constructed in the police department, along with a couple of mezzanines, one in the public workshop and one in the police storage. I wasn't around when that construction took place. The city manager, very early in his time here, identified a need or a lack of fire suppression in some of these areas, and I even accompanied him and the fire marshal on a walk through city hall. I was surprised to take note of how many areas throughout city hall didn't have fire suppression. We put this project out for bid and we picked the most qualified contractor that, that could complete and install the plumbing and sprinklers without wasting a lot of money. The new plumbing and sprinklers were installed, the fire marshal came out, did an initial inspection. We had one thing to correct, we got that corrected. They came back out and the fire marshal has now given us his blessing. So we are now in compliance with the fire code. The completion of Heron Park, I know that this was one that was on a lot of people's minds in the community. I do recall being asked several times when we were going to update the play structures, when we were going to put the swings back up, when were we going to put a new? Uh when were we going to put a new roof on it? Well, all those things happened. Uh the renovations were complete as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh this included the new playground structures. They redid the parking lot and the pathway to the tennis court. There's a new roof on the restroom building and pavilion. And they also conducted some repairs to some picnic benches and outside barbecues. Now, there was fire damage in one of the restrooms that prevented us from opening the restrooms at the same time as the park became open. Um it took us about three weeks, but we got all the fire damage repaired and both those restrooms were open at that point. You can see here the. Panels on the Main Street Bridge. We worked with the Art and Beautification Board to fabricate a structure, the aluminum structure there you see between the two poles. And we mounted the Art and Beautification Board's historical panels on that structure. There is one thing left to do here on the bridge and that is the lighting. Um. We went through to try and and fix the lighting that's there, but due to. Age and weather and wear and tear, uh only about half of them are able to be lit up at this point. So we have a plan to move forward with LED. Um and that'll be one of the future projects that we'll be excited to take on. Surface water. As I'm sure many of you know, the city of Mill Creek was behind, a little bit behind in our. Our uh surface water management program. Uh over the last few months, uh. You guys are familiar with Stacy Clear. She helped us develop our stormwater management plan. And part of that plan was incorporating training for not only a public works crew, but other members of the city, including police. Um what we've done is we've hired a couple of contractors that came out and provided instruction and training. On catch basin pond vault and and stream inspection. Um we have dug in and uh started. Providing the crew with training on illicit discharge detection and elimination. We've. Began doing sampling of various streams and ponds um to meet our requirements outlined by the Department of Ecology and our service water plan. Uh we have ongoing training conducting. Friday for the crew is is training day. Every morning on Friday, we have done it's in a in a learning or an educational course. Uh fifty fifty percent of these Fridays has been dedicated to service water and service water training. The whole crew is now being educated and they're getting up to speed on not only what. Illicit discharge detection and elimination is and means. Uh we have upgraded our spill kits. We've done a full inventory and the idea behind that is. Having the crew, at least our crew, able to readily. Respond to a spill and mitigate the hazard. Uh we do have the fire department. We're not out there all by ourselves. We have the fire department and there is the Department of Ecology Emergency Response Center. That are available as well uh for any spills that are over six feet in diameter. The future. So projects that we are looking to take on here in the very near future, one would be, I think it's pretty blatant. The streetlight replacement on State Route five two seven. We're looking to have that complete in early May. Uh the railing repair on one hundred and forty-sixth Street Southeast, which is in the Webster's Pond neighborhood. That project was supposed to be completed already. Uh I I don't like to play the blame game or or give any. Offhand reasons as to why, just the contractor has been delayed. Uh I have gone out and taken measurements that they've requested. It just doing everything I can to expedite the process and get them on the road and over here to 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 complete the repair. Uh part of the struggle there is they are out of Idaho. So that kind of creates a bit of a challenge if they forget a measurement or they need, you know, any kind of information relating to. Equipment and fleet updating is something that has been on the forefront of my mind, but. What we don't want to do is jump in and buy a bunch of stuff and then they'll come to find out, you know, it would sure be nice to have this, that or the other. Uh so that will be a continued conversation here relatively soon. Uh sidewalk shaving and path repair, that's something that I know we farmed out in the past, uh but we are taking that on. Uh as a crew, as a team. Part of the sidewalk shaving and path repair would be, I think a lot of people realize or know. Um if you walk to any of the parks, there is roots that grow under these sidewalks and they upheave. Uh different parts of the path. So I am mounting a campaign to go through and eliminate all those trip hazards. Uh something new to me or that has come up anyways is the library floor. Apparently, there's some squishy spots. We've we've done an investigation on it and that is, that just happened this week, actually. Uh so that will be something that we'll be talking about here relatively soon as well. Refurbishing city signs at the entrances. We do. There are a couple of signs throughout the city that are old and at the, we'll call it the wrong location. Uh they were where the city entrance was at one point, though, since the city boundaries have grown. Uh those signs are actually, we plan on bringing those out and installing. Um at least one more city sign, hopefully down on the uh south end of the city along SR five two seven. Uh replacing the missing streetlight poles in town center, there is one in front of the hot yoga studio on one hundred and fifty-third. Uh that streetlight actually should be up by tomorrow and then we need. Another one across from City Hall and that streetlight, I could tell you that the pole itself actually is is got a. About a two-month lag time. Uh but we're getting it ordered and as soon as we get it in, we'll get that back up and everything will kind of go back to looking normal. Uh I am placing an emphasis on the um aesthetics throughout the city. You know, it's one thing to mow the grass and it's another thing to mow the grass and mow it and make it look nice. Um. That's probably the easiest example I could give is mowing grass, but when you. When you have a lawless mode and you have a lawless mode and edged and trimmed and green and beautiful, I think it makes a difference. Uh building updating, there's multiple issues with the HVAC system in the City Hall North Building. Uh we're working that out and it it kind of coincides with the next bullet point of roof repair and upgrades for safety. The upgrades for safety I'm referring to is the seismic retrofit that we're looking at as well as the roof. Uh that roof has outlived its life expect expectancy and is now being patched together. So that will be something that is. On our plate for this upcoming year. Uh improved roadway maintenance. We are actually in the process of purchasing equipment to be able to perform crack sealing, which goes a long way. In in keeping a road maintained, safe and smooth and preventing potholes. Seacoals, you know, there's only so much we can do about the sinkholes other than when they occur. Uh dig them up, figure out what the root cause is and then backfill it and pack it correctly. A general look at what Public Works does. Now, this is just a very, very, very short list of the things that we take on. Part of our responsibilities include the upkeep of eleven city parks, five of which have restrooms. Uh maintaining the North Creek Trail, that includes the fence that goes the entire stretch of the trail. Uh the sports park, as you guys, as everybody, I I'm sure is aware, we just spent a whole boatload of money. Uh last year to redo the sports park turf. Um and part of that is we purchased the equipment to to maintain the turf effectively. Little caveat is that equipment only works when the turf is relatively dry. We can't go out in the middle of the of a rainstorm and and sweep the turf and and. Correct the infield. Uh removing graffiti is an ongoing thing. Uh it it pops up throughout the city at any given place at any given time. Roadway maintenance and repair is something that I just mentioned, we're we're. Taking that up a notch. There's more that we should be doing and so there's more that we're going to be doing. Uh keeping the streetlights on, we are out weekly doing inspections to find out where the streetlights are out. Um and then as citizens report streetlights out throughout the city, particularly in the Village Green Drive area. Uh we get a hold of PUD to get those handled. There's always going to be citizen concerns and that's what we're here for. We're here to help help the citizens and 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 keep. Everything flowing through the city as as easily as possible. Uh changing city banners as season changes, that's kind of a. A general task that we have scheduled on the calendar. Maintaining beaver dams and eliminating hazards that they create. Beavers, I don't want to use the word nuisance, but um they they get their their name for a reason. Your Beaver, Busy Beaver, whatever you want to say, they they do not stop. Uh they they are active all winter and they are active all summer and therefore, especially during the rainy seasons, we are. Hard at work trying to mitigate the hazards that they create. Uh there's beacons and crosswalks near the school zones. Uh I do know that those uh crosswalks and beacons. Um otherwise known as rapid uh. R R F Bs. Um. We have historical issues with the ones that are currently installed. I have been working with an electrician trying to figure out what is the best possible solution. Um and as we develop that and we we have a couple of things to test, uh so hopefully one of those tests prove uh. Produces successful results and we can move forward with a replacement or a repair. Uh we're always working with other departments to complete special projects. Uh the Main Street Bridge signs would be one. Um the veteran and Memorial Day projects, that would be another. Um I said before, this is just a very short list. For emergencies, of course, always call nine one one first, uh but. I would also like to encourage the community and anybody to report any non-emergency issues by using the requests and feedback tab. On the city's website. So in closing. As a public works employee, the best compliment is when public works is taken for granted and the people trust us. That's our motto. That's how we feel. And if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to take them at this time.
Thank you, Matthew. Councilmember Cavallari.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Matt, can you unshare your screen so I can see you? There you are. Hey, how you doing? Great presentation, by the way. Thank you for that.
Please, sir.
I did have a a couple of questions I did want to go over. Um we we kind of glossed over the. Street sign piece of it for for um identifying parks and different landmarks and locations and how. Uh dilapidated they were. Um did do we have a timeframe? Um I I know we have our parks meeting tomorrow, so there's an expectation that I might have an update for them. So if we can maybe give the council an update of of when perhaps we're going to take action on that, do you need us to bless it? I know. You managed to get the cost down uh relatively significant, so. Um can you uh just update us on that? And I also want to give a credit to uh one of our Parks Board members. Melissa Duque, uh the new chair. This uh young lady took it on her own council to go out and identify and and geographically mark. Uh where all the signs were, where all the bad ones were, uh photographed them for us and really. Take on a lot of this role herself and um and really, I guess, took the bull by the horns and she's bringing, she's the reason we're having this conversation. So uh. Credit to her for being a very vibrant member of the Parks Board. So Matt, if you can answer that before I move on to my second question, thank you.
Absolutely. That's that's a a great question. Thank you, Councilmember. I actually was just out. Uh over the weekend, looking at all the places that she proposed, all the locations that she proposed or that were proposed uh to me for these signs. I've got a couple of edits and a couple of changes that I'm going to propose to the the board tomorrow. Um that being the reason, since I know that the the installation hasn't been approved yet and I don't think it's even gone to council. Um or at least all the steps haven't been taken. So I didn't want to throw that in there without, you know, it's not my project. I just want to be able to help. So I have, I have all the locations, I've visited all the sites and I have all the answers to all the questions um that I'd be happy to uh. To convey to you or we can just do it at the be the meeting tomorrow.
And so when council gives the nod to go ahead, I mean, what do you anticipate for a timeframe to get this out? Because I know you were talking before. Really beginning of spring before you got uh heavy into projects. I think that's kind of where I'm pushing you a little bit.
Yeah, I understand that and. It's hard to put a timeframe to it right now because there's so many changes that are to be going on in the next couple of weeks. Um something I can't really elaborate on right now, but. Once everything is said and done and approved and we're down to the nitty gritty, it's time to put the signs up. About a month.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Matt. Uh my second question is, uh you brought up the library floor. Maybe go into a little bit detail about that because I I it's my understanding that the interior. Um infrastructure of the library is not the city's responsibility and if I'm wrong about that. Correct me, let me know. Um I believe we, I thought we were the exterior. That was our our function as as our role of the partnership.
So it is a structural thing. Uh and being a structural thing that would fall on the city. Now, the library does handle all the books and all the the racks and desks and chairs and everything in there like that. Uh but the building itself. Um just because the floor is inside the library doesn't doesn't negate our our responsibility for the structure.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Let me throw in this, Mike, let me throw in that the library is talking about replacing the floor ring. This is the structural part of the floor below it. It's spongy and probably needs some structural work and we don't know yet. Matt's guys, just Matthew's guys just opened it up last weekend. We have more investigations to do first.
Thanks, Mike.
Mayor Protem followed by Councilmember Brows.
Thank you, Mayor. Um thank you, Matthew, for um this great presentation. I think that. A lot of the public doesn't realize exactly how hard you all work and how much you accomplish in a year. And I know that every time I see something and reach out that you guys are out there and take care of it and. A lot of times you'll even take care of something before I have a chance to actually call about it. And like, you know, oh, so I know you guys are all working really hard. Um something that's been on my mind as to Director Todd, right when he started. Um everybody just froze. I don't know if you can hear me or not. Uh so is the aesthetics and. Kind of like with with pressure washing and um you know, just to keep things clean and crisp, that that really bothers me. And um and it's fine because the meridians really bother me and um I see Sid Segal on here. He actually brought that up. Um recently as well, because I just feel like they they just aren't as maintained and polished. As our city should be looking. So I just want to, I know I've already talked to uh Director Todd about this when he first um came aboard. So I just want to make sure those things are um on your list. I know you all have a lot of things to accomplish, but um I think those little details. Are are what make us look exceptional and um and they get noticed. So thank you.
Absolutely. I agree with you a hundred percent. Thank you for mentioning that.
Councilmember Brows.
Hey, Matt, uh just wanted to say, great presentation on all the work that you do there on Public Works. Uh I have definitely noticed this and I've heard some accolades uh for the progress that we've made. Um I actually, I wanted to mention on that uh. The Arts and Beautification Board uh sign uh historical project there that's on that bridge and uh right on Main Street. Um that looks really great. I'm really happy with that. I know um that was a project that we'd worked on. Uh as part of the Arts and Beautification Board and I was wondering if you uh had any challenges in getting those up. Uh so that if we were to do any kind of project in the future, there's kind of any lessons learned there. Uh I have not been able to attend an Arts and Beautification Board for a while. So if you've already given a report, that's great, but I was wondering if there's anything there.
In short, no, I, we did a pretty darn good job. I think it got planned out really well and we didn't really run into any obstacles. There was one minor error that I made, uh but we got it corrected. It wasn't any. There was one minor error that I made, uh, but we got it corrected. It wasn't any skin off anybody's back. And yeah, it went really well.
All right. That's great to hear. Thank you, Matt. Also, I have the WD forty back there behind you. I assume you've got all the duct tape.
Uh, I got a lot.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Matt. Thank you for all you and your staff do for, for this city. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And so we'll move on then, Mayor, uh, to the next item on the council agenda. That's a study session on uh, Articles Three and Six of the Governance Manual. Uh, Grant has really put in the, the time to reconcile the current state of our Articles Three and Six with many changes that have occurred. Uh, so uh, what we'd like to do is just get started and turn the floor over to Grant. Get started with uh, Article Three. You unmute Grant.
Yeah, Naomi, could you give me permission to uh, screen share?
Yes, I will. Sorry about that. Okay, you're set.
Okay, do you have it up? Does it say Governance Manual on there?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Great.
Full screen.
Amazing. All right. So tonight, we're gonna, this is the second of our meetings on revising the the uh, Governance Manual. So oops, let me jumping ahead a little bit. So tonight, uh, we're in our second of our four sessions on it. Um, previously, we talked about Articles One, Two, and Four and Five. Tonight, we're going to talk about Three and Six. Uh, in our April meeting, we'll talk about the remaining articles which are um, Seven, uh, Eight and Nine. And then hopefully our goal is to have a draft based upon the comments we receive from you of a, of a, of a complete revised version of the Governance Manual in May. So um, starting off tonight, uh, Article Three contains a lot of the provisions that um, affect how you do your business. Um, and there are many of them, obviously. Uh, we can start with the, the federal and state constitutions um, that you all raised your right hand when you were um, sworn in to defend. And uh, that obviously has, that permeates through all these other state laws. And there's a number of state laws that do affect um, how the council goes about doing its business. There's the State Ethics Act that we'll talk about. There's the Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, there are provisions of the Public Records Act that are significant. And this is one, I, it says the Public Discourse Act, which is really embarrassing to me because I spent five years on the Public Disclosure Commission and I've obviously misspelled the Public Disclosure Act. Um, there's always, there's the, uh, the appearance of fairness doctrine. We won't talk about that much today, but it is one that affects uh, that is significant when you're dealing with land use decisions. Obviously, the city code applies as well. And then I have a dotted line to the Mill Creek Governance Manual, the manual that we're talking about tonight. Because that dotted line between council and the governance manual is there because um, as stated in section nine point one, uh, the, the Governance Manual is a guidance document rather than a binding set of things. It's, it's a set of goals that you have for how you want to conduct your business. So we might talk about that a little bit further at the next session, but that's the reason why there's a slightly dotted line there. Um, what I'm going to do is go through and I, I provided in the, your agenda memo uh, sets of uh, the proposed revisions to Article Three. And there's really three different, several different things that we're trying to do. One is update some of the references that are, that there are uh, due to statutes that have changed. And also uh, uh, other guidance documents that have changed. But uh, also we tried to, we've tried to get rid of duplication in the document and we've also tried to um, refresh the language a little bit where appropriate. Uh, the, the manual was adopted in twenty eleven, so it's ten years uh, old and, and certain things have changed. So we're not going to go through every one of the changes that are in, included in the materials that were sent to you in the packet, but we will try to go over the, the more significant ones. One of the things I wanted to start with is uh, under uh, this section called Standards of Conduct for Officials, there were some resource materials that were mentioned. And I did want to call to your attention um, a, a document that's quite a bit newer now, uh, that it's, it's an MRSC document titled Knowing the Territory: Basic Legal Guidelines for Washington City, County and Special Purpose Districts. This is a good resource that summarizes a lot of the state laws that affect your operations. It's a pretty easy read and it answers a lot of general questions. So if there are times when you want to get some more information about how an open public, uh, what an open, what a records act issue is, or what the Open Public Meetings Act says, that might be a good reference and it is available online. Another area that, that, that's a lot of time is spent on is potential conflicts of interest. And what we've tried to do here is address several uh, proposed changes that, that are one, in part updates, but also uh, adding some information that had not previously been included in the uh, in the Governance Manual. One of the, the first item is a reference to RCW forty-two seventeen A seven hundred. Um, the Public Records Act was recodified um, in about the middle of the teens. And so the references that were there were uh, were now out of date. I did also want to add a couple of items from uh, the Public Record Statute that are, that are of significance. One is, as I think many of you know, if not all of you know, that you have to annually provide a statement of financial affairs or an update to it uh, by April fifteenth of every year. So that date's coming up. If you're thinking about those things, uh, bear in mind that that's a deadline. Um, also, um, there is with, the PDC has adopted this more recently. In the annual fa- uh, financial disclosure, there's a requirement now that you specify uh, any food and beverage in excess of fifty dollars that was accepted. Um, and so you have to start identifying if you, you know, if you were, if somebody bought you uh, anything um, in terms of a meal in excess of fifty dollars. There's an exception for food and beverage consumed at hosted receptions where the attendance is related to your official duties and that doesn't need to be included then. What I think is happening is that the commission is trying to make local governmental officials comply with the same rules that the state legislators have. So that's the genesis for that. Uh, another provision I wanted to uh, mention and add uh, was uh, this last one involving RCW forty-two seventeen A five fifty-five. The single largest number of complaints to the PDC for many years has been uh, claims that elected officials were using uh, public facilities uh, either directly or indirectly for reelection purposes. So I wanted to just make sure that there is a reference to that in the manual because this is an area uh, where there has been a lot of concern by the public and, and it's a, a place to, just a, a good place to have a reminder about that series of rules. The next area I want to talk about is in three point six point one. It addresses the State Ethics Code. There is a State Ethic, Ethics Code and it's codified in RCW Chapter forty-two, twenty-three. And it addresses a, a several different things. And one, it applies to all cities and it sets what, what it, what is specifically described as minimum standards for uh, for avoiding conflicts of interest. The key provision and the key takeaway is that, you know, that council members cannot have a direct or an indirect interest in any contracts uh, involving the city. Uh, so it, it sounds obvious, but it's important uh, not to have any situation where you are, have any direct or indirect involvement in the contract. There are some exceptions. Um, and they're generally tailored to, you know, to uh, kind of one-off situations in smaller communities where there's maybe an inability to have anybody else provide a service other than somebody on the city council. So uh, think of the major rule is, the major takeaway is you can't have an interest, direct or indirect, in a contract with the city. John, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I, I didn't know if we could interrupt or not. I did put my hand up, uh.
Oh, I'm, I apologize, Councilmember. I didn't see you.
No, 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 no. You're just doing great, good stuff. Um, a cou- couple of thoughts. Um, first of all, on that statement of financial what do they call it? Financial affairs? Um, I was a little confused on that. I remember that I filled that out when I first became a councilman. But you're stating this needs to be filled out every year.
You need to fill it out every year, or you can do a, um, you can do, and there's a short version that you can use rather than the full. Every, every four years, I think you have to do the full financial affair statement. And then you could do an update, which is a smaller version. There's a short form that's available that you can fill out. But you, you do have to identify these, uh, you know, any kind of travel, lodging or food, food and beverage expenditures.
Right. And I, I did the short form, but my understanding when I did the short form is it's once every, every four year, every election, you fill it out. So
It's the annual.
This
You do the full one every four years. You do the short one in between.
It's called like an F six or something, right?
Hmm.
All right. So F one A is what I think it's called.
One thing I'm going to kind of digress to for a second here. Um, uh, as volunteers, some people have more experience than others in what forms need to be filled out and such. I think as we go through these proposed changes that you're making and such, I'm going to make some suggestions and some actions here that it would be good if the city could help its council members by um, you know, sending out a notice of, uh, I remember our, our previous mayor used to do this where she would give us notice of when uh, particular reports were due. And I think it would be good from the city standpoint to say, okay, your F ones are due now, your F sixes are due. Uh, it would be very helpful to the, to the council members as, as well as, I think, um, I really liked your suggestion on MRSC two thousand nineteen. Uh, that would be a great document. Again, as volunteers, I would make a recommendation that the city uh, get that link or get that document, if anything, and send it out to all of its council members, asking them to please uh, uh, read it and sign it. Just it's, it sounds like that's the kind of stuff we should be uh, made aware of and we should be uh, signing and, and documenting. But I think it's asking a lot for people to, hey, here's something good. You should go find this. You know, go look it up. I don't, you know, find a link. I think it'd be good for the city to, to really help make sure the council members are are up to speed on these things. So I would recommend sending a, a link out or even a copy of the MRSC two, two thousand nineteen that you talked about.
I'll send that out. I can do that.
I think that'd be a good idea. I think if we're going through these and as well as this financial statement, I was under the understanding that I filled it out once when I, you know, when I did my election. I, you know, here's a sad thing. I didn't know I was supposed to fill it out every year. And good news is I had no financial affairs or i- issues or anything, but still, I'd like to know if that was supposed to be done. I wasn't aware of that. Um, so
The PDC sends reminders to everybody as well.
No, I never got one. I never got one that I was supposed to fill this out every year.
I think even, don't spend anything, John. It still has to be filled out.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Oh, okay.
And if there was a reminder, I never saw it. So, great.
Contact the PDC and make sure they have a current email for you because I get reminders every year by these guys.
Yeah, I have not gotten anything on that. Uh, these would be great for me. I'm, sounds like you're getting what I'm asking for is reminders of what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, and then who was that again? Mark Mon?
Yes, sir.
Who was that?
PDC, the Public Disclosure Committee emails you reminder every year to do your F one.
More than one reminder. I got repeated reminder.
Yeah, you, you'll get blown up. So it must just be a weird oversight that you weren't getting it.
I'm not. Okay. Good. Then I guess I contact them.
Hey, John, just to help problem solve, you might have it on your campaign um, email address. That's why you're not getting it. I had that happen too, so.
Yeah, I checked that one too. I checked that one too regularly because I, I get that. So somehow I'm getting overlooked, but I'll look it up. I'll contact PDC is what I'll do. Thank you.
Councilmember Brows again asked two questions because he has his yellow hand up and his actual hand.
Sorry, I realized I'd left my hand up earlier. And so I wanted to make clear that I was re-raising it for a different issue.
Thank you.
I just, uh, I actually want to uh, say, let us not ask the city to remind us when to file our F ones, et cetera. Because that is asking the city to help us with campaign issues and I think that's a conflict of interest. So um, please do not, uh, city uh, remind us to do anything regarding our campaign time. But uh, we should probably check our PDC filings to make sure that uh, our email addresses are appropriate and our contact information with them is appropriate so that we do get reminders. Sorry.
Councilmember Stekler, is your hand back up?
It is back up and I totally disagree with Councilmember Brows. I do think it's part, part of this is we are not paid council members. We're volunteer council members. So um, when I first joined the council, there was a lot more support for the council members to help them through this navigating this process. It's not a, it's, it's not anything illegal to help them make sure that they're not making mistakes. I think that's just su- supporting the, the, the citizens that wish to so, to, to, to volunteer their time and, and energy.
Director Todd, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I think, don't confuse the two things. Your F one is required because you are a council member. And so the city could appropriately remind you to do that, just like the PDC does. That's separate from any paperwork that's required for a campaign for office, which every candidate needs to do. The two things are both done through the PDC, but it's two different things. Once you become a council member, you have to file your financial affairs, which is everything you own or owe or any affiliations you have with boards that might have a conflict of interest with the city. That's a separate thing from what you did when you were elected and, and ran a campaign. So two different things. Make sure you understand both. And I, I'm with Councilmember Brows that you ought to be careful. I think the campaign stuff is maybe in the gray area, probably ought to ask Grant, but be careful about that stuff. Campaign is one thing. Actually being a council member and doing an F one is another thing.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It's only, only do once a year. I think it's either April first or April fifteenth. It's right around tax time. So that's when you fill out your taxes, fill out your PDC. Because it's a requirement, uh, it's an ongoing requirement for incumbent, for, for electeds. I don't see it as a conflict to be reminded that you annually have to be, you have to uh, file your, your F one updates, um, because it's part of the job. Um, so that's not a campaign activity. That's a, that's part of the requirements of the job. Councilmember, I'm sorry, do you finish, Grant?
That's it.
Uh, Councilmember Brows, did you have another question to comment?
Uh, just one last thing. Um, you may want to check your bank accounts there, Councilmember Stekler. Uh, I do get a paycheck from the city twice a month for uh, my role here. Um, it is not entirely volunteer. We can talk about the amount, but um, I do get paid. Uh, so it is not entirely volunteer. Um, but uh, thank you for that clarification on the F one and how it is uh, it has actually a role of the incumbent and an incumbent would need to do that. So in that case, fine, F one reminder would be just fine.
Councilmember Juan, followed by Councilmembers Stekler.
Thank you. Yeah, it's public information. Councilmembers for the city of Mill Creek are compensated five hundred dollars a month. The mayor gets seven hundred and fifty to chair the meetings. I think if the minimum wage law passes, that qualifies us for a pay raise. Uh, but we are technically compensated. Thank you.
John, is your hand back up?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
Technically, we are not compensated. We are below the minimum wage. You're receiving a stipend. A stipend is different than, than a base salary. We're not an employee. We are compensated with a stipend to cover our expenses. Our position is that as a volunteer, but we are not an paid employee of the city. Uh, if I were, I would have a problem with the, the hourly wage that I'm being paid. But I'm, I'm not because I don't see myself as an employee.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay. So this next uh, section is also part of the Ethics Act and it, it focuses on, uh, there's no significant change here because but it's worth a, a reminder, the things that, things that you as a council member cannot do, or any elected official cannot do. Use your position to obtain special privileges for yourself, uh, giving or receiving a gift in connection with the city manner. Accepting employment or engaging in a business that would require disclosing confidential information gained as a city official. And then just, uh, this is the fourth item is uh, disclosing confidential information gained as a city official for personal gain. And, and also remembering this, and this is what I wanted to add, is this provision includes disclosure of information obtained in executive session that is confidential information. It would be a violation of the Ethics Stat- Statute to disclose confidential information obtained in executive session. The next section deals with, uh, with the topic of the, your duties to act in the interest of the city. Um, obviously, uh, what we've done here is makes, made a, a change in organization in Article three. This was this provision that you see on the right previously was in section three point nine, but it seems so well connected with the Ethics Act discussion that it made sense to move it over into this section and to, uh, to add just a, a slight introduction, um, to this topic, um, to state that the council members would be, um, complying with the, these principles about you not using your position, um, or the knowledge ga- uh, uh, that you gain from it. Um, for your own personal interests. And that's really what the focus of this is. It also, uh, the last paragraph is important because sometimes it's possible that you could have, uh, a transaction. Uh, there could be a transaction with the city, um, that could involve you either directly or indirectly. In other words, if you were a member of, say, a nonprofit board and the city is looking at entering into an agreement or a transaction, uh, it would be prudent for you to, one, disclose that interest and then not participate in the discussion or the vote on the matter. So these kinds of situations can come up from time to time. The key is notifying, uh, making a disclosure and then recusing yourself from participating. Uh, some cities require, uh, when you recuse that you leave the meeting during the time that that topic is discussed and voted on. That's not in the, in your, uh, in the man, the governance manual right now. It's certainly an option that you could add it if you so desire. Um, the next section deals with executive sessions and, um, executive sessions generally are found in RCW forty-two thirty-one hundred. These are exceptions to the Open Meetings, um, Act. And so there are a number of exceptions, uh, to the OPMA. A, a number of them are listed already in, um, the, uh, Governance Manual. We haven't changed those. What we are proposing to do is add one additional one. There is one statute, RCW forty-two thirty-one forty, which provides and, uh, that executive sessions can, um, can involve topics involving the collective bargaining negotiations or dealing with a grievance or mediations of grievances or other proposals made in, in collective bargaining negotiations. That is something that does come up from to time, from time to time here at the council. So it made sense to add it.
Brandon, as you point out in there, the list that we have in the current manual doesn't list everything that's in the statute. So we might consider some language that it's clear that the full list is set out in the statute and that what we provide in that list is an example of some typical topics that we cover in executive session.
Okay, that's a good suggestion, Mayor. We'll do that. Um, another area in the, uh, Public Records section in the, in the open government section of the, um, manual, uh, involves, um, a discussion of the Public Records Act itself. And the, the introduction to that, uh, section was a little bit out of date and what we are proposing to do here is just add some language about what the act is and what the act's history is and focus on the fact that the act is a strongly worded mandate for broad disclosure of public records. And that certainly is the case. And we've talked about that in previous sessions when we've talked about the Public Records Act. So we want to make sure that we include that. The other thing we're doing here in section three point eight is, is some updating. Um, uh, I wanted to include that text messages can also, uh, you know, under certain circumstances, be public records as well. And we're going to discuss, uh, adding a provision that will address some of the other items of social media because since, um, since twenty eleven, social media has just grown and expanded dramatically. And so questions about what is or is not a public record with respect to, uh, individual council members' social media accounts are coming up and they have been mitigated to a certain extent in the state of Washington. So what I wanted to do was suggest adding a provision, this three point eight, uh, C, uh, to address that fact. Um, and there's a couple of reasons why. The first thing I want to say is that possession or use of a social media account is not a requirement of being a city council member. You're not required to do that. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a job requirement. Um, having them is certainly the choice of an individual council member. Uh, but if you have them, um, it's important to state from the standpoint of the city that the city is not responsible for maintaining them. So that's an important element as well. Uh, i- if a council member chooses, uh, to have a social media account and chooses to discuss city business, um, either in posts or in questions and answers or chats or some other me- method, um, that is a, that's the point at which you may be creating a public record, uh, that would be subject to disclosure. And I want to, uh, follow up with a couple of slides that give you some context as to what constitutes public record and when you might have an obligation to disclose that. So the first part is, um, the test of whether, you know, something is a public record.
Can I interrupt for a second before you get, records? Can you go back a slide?
You bet.
And the second sentence, um, I would suggest that we revise it. So it says, the city does not maintain or support such accounts on behalf of council members because the city does have those accounts. So I, it was a little confusing to me when I read the city does not maintain. It doesn't maintain individual council member.
That's correct. That's a good suggestion, Mayor. Thank you.
Um, the other question, comment I have is, um, whether or not we need to have some language that says if a council member, well, it's regarded as, well, if the council member chooses to post something on social media, whatever the venue is, should we have something that states that without, I mean, not getting into restricting or limiting the content, but we should make clear that whatever someone posts does not expressly state or imply that their opinion is the opinion of the city or the council. Everyone's free to say what they want to say on social media if they want to, but what I don't think they should do is be expressly stating or implying that what they're saying is the position of the council or the city.
I think here it gets there. I, I, I don't. So you're saying that if anybody writes something on Facebook that they put a disclaimer like that on the bottom, I don't agree with that at all.
Not necessarily saying there's a disclaimer. I'm just saying that it not, either expressly or impliedly stated. So I'm not going to get into the content of how that's done, but I ju- I think we just need to make clear that that we were not supposed to be putting, saying anything on the web, on social media that we're saying implies a position of the council or the city. And maybe Grant could think of some language that we could evaluate it in the next study session to see if it's something that we think is worth adding or not.
We could certainly take a shot at drafting something and then, uh, council can decide whether it wants to include it.
Yeah, if you could, then we can have an informed discussion rather than debating the, the theoretical point.
Sure.
Thanks.
So, uh, when trying to talk about here is just what the test is for whether something is a public record. The first, the first test question is, is it a writing? Well, it obviously is. That, that part pretty straightforward. Um, does it contain information related to the conduct of government? That's the phrase that you see in the cases that address these issues. Or the performance of a governmental or proprietary function. Um, so, uh, that usually is fairly, uh, you know, i- i- if the topic of, of what it's addressing, if it's addressing city-related a, a, a city-related issue, whether it's Seattle Hill Road or, um, or the, the passport office or something like that. Um, and then, but as opposed to, uh, just a discussion, either a, you know, on a personal Facebook page, either a discussion about your family or a discussion about, uh, the world in general or, um, you know, other things that aren't related to the city's conduct. Then the other, uh, test that they have is, was it prepared by a government agency? And, um, the phrase that they use is, was the communication within the council members' scope of employment? And what by that they mean, did, did, did your job require it? Did the employer direct it? And typically, as we're discussing here, if this policy in, in three point eight C is adopted, the job doesn't requirement, require it, the employer doesn't direct it. Then the question becomes, does it further the employer's interest? And this is one that is, um, the closer question that we get into when we talk about the cases addressed and whether a post becomes so, a, a, a public record from, for, for the sta- uh, for the purpose of the Public Records Act. And the questions that the courts tend to look at first is whether it indicates that you are acting in your official capacity. So if you are stating that you are, you know, if you, if this is Brian, if Mayor, if I could pick on you briefly, uh, if this is Brian Hulseclaw's Facebook page, and that's all it says, uh, that's not an, an initial indicia of yeah, you acting in your official capacity. If it says Mayor Brian Hulseclaw's Facebook page, then it tends to get closer to, in that instance, uh, suggesting that you're acting in your official capacity. Then the next question is, are you conducting city business? And again, this has to do with the topics that you're discussing. If the focus of, uh, of what your post is, is relating to your view about the condition of the world, your view about, um, whether the Mariners are going to win the pennant this year, um, not likely to be viewed as city bit, business. If it's about, you know, a park project in the city or, um, you know, a, a, a transportation project or some other issue that's going to be either has been or is going to be in front of the city council, that is closer to where it will likely be viewed as something related to your employment and, and, uh, furthering the, as they say, furthering the employer's interests and likely to be subject to something that you would have to produce if it is relevant to a public records request.
Hey, Grant, if I could, uh, interrupt you there, um, just leave that slide up if you would. So the first sentence, does it indicate if you're acting in your official capacity? Well, if you say, I, I'm a councilman and I hereby say that this, the, uh, the leaves that were raked this afternoon were a horrible job, then yeah, that's, that's in your official capacity, kind of making a determination on, on city work or conduct. Um, but if, if your title is, let's say, I mean, I'm going to use mine because I'm kind of sure that's who we're talking about here. I write on social media a lot and, and I stay away from city business intentionally for that reason. And I would, and I would submit, is it any different than, let's say my name was Dr. Vincent Cavalieri and I worked for Providence Hospital? Now, everywhere I go, I, I introduce myself as Dr. Vincent Cavalieri. But I, am I considered always a representative of Providence Hospital? And do they have the right to even inject themselves into that conversation under First Amendment rules?
So you've raised it, you've raised good questions and I wish I could give you a bright line answer. Uh, because the cases have very few bright lines and they generally to be, tend to be very fact intensive. You could say, uh, you could, you could list, uh, you could have a Facebook page with your name as Councilmember Cavalieri. And if you're talking about the world in general, it's not likely to be, uh, viewed as a record in that regard. On the other hand, if you're talking, if you're answering questions from constituents on that, um, on that Facebook page or you're engaging in dialogue with constituents about city-related topics, that certainly leans it more toward it being, um, a, a public record. And I think that the key here is, uh, put in item four is that the act, it favors a broad interpretation and every and, and most every court will broadly interpret the scope of any writing or any record to be a public record. If there's any, if it's a close call, it's likely to be deemed it. That means there'll be an obligation to seek, you know, to, to, um, produce them if it's, if it's requested and if it relates to, uh, if it meets the other elements of the test. So I wish I could give you a clear, absolutely crystal clear in all instances answer, but I can't.
And, and lastly, lastly, the, um, if the account is already public access, meaning that everybody has access to it, whether it's, whether they want it or not, that, that anybody who's requesting a record simply has to go and press the print button. Um, does that make a lot of this, what we're talking about moot in this instance?
Well, it is, it's still up, it creates the obligation to produce it. And I would say this, there is a court decision from the Division Two of the Court of Appeals recently that actually said that, which is, it seems redundant that we have to require a, uh, an elected official to produce something that's already available to the public online. But the Public Records Act requires the production of it, um, and, and there's, given the penalties for not following the Public Records Act, you should end up having to do that disclosure anyway. Um, I'm not saying it's fair or right. I'm just saying that's what the, that would be my counsel in those instances.
No, and I don't think it's unfair. I'm, I'm just saying that if, if the redundancy is what they're looking for and you need me or someone else who's writing to hit the print button, then, then that's fine. So be it. But I don't want to get in too much language or too much minutia of, of how someone can present themselves and, and what they can talk about. I think that's a very slippery slope and, uh, and I'd certainly like to be heard further on a lot of it.
Before I get to John and then Stephanie, Vince, I think the distinction in your hypothetical is the doctor, that's not particular to his employment with Providence. That's particular to his educational professional training. He is licensed as a doctor by the state. He could be a doctor anywhere. When you're a council member, you're elected by one jurisdiction. Um, so it's not transferable.
Well, I mean, I can come up with other examples if you want to go back and forth, but.
I'm, I'm not trying to go back and forth because I don't think anyone's trying to regulate the speech. I think the general caveat, as I said earlier, is we just need to be careful that we're not, when we're saying to social media, making anything that could be suggested to be a statement of a official position of the council of the city. That's it.
Right.
That's what we're all, we're trying to get at.
Yeah, I know. We steered off a little bit, but I, I just want to make sure we stay on that path. Thanks.
Yeah. And the, and the function of the, of the manual is to provide a guidance. Here's, here's the sideboards as we understand them. And, um, that's the best we can do.
Councilmember Steckler and then Mayor Protem.
What I, what I'm interpreting from this, Grant, I want to make sure that I'm on the, the right page is, um, there is certain topics that as council members, we can't talk about executive session items and we go through that list again, but that, that just, we, we don't have a right to bring those out in public. But if a council member wants to speak about topics that are facing the city, that are public disclosure, there are public awareness and the public wants to know from those council members, how do you feel about this or that? Uh, we have a First Amendment right as a council member, elected official. Yeah, we can speak on them. But what you're making us aware of is that when we do that, and, and it's our choice to do that, but when we do that, then that becomes, uh, you know, a, 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 an item of interpretation for the, uh, Public Records Act. And so you, you just need to know the slip, the, the slope you're getting, the slope you're getting on. But I, I know when it, from Councilmember Cavalieri, I, I get pressured from constituents to say, how come you don't speak out more about how you, what you think you, you feel about issues? And, uh, I'd like to hear more from you on your, I have a Facebook page. But if you're right, there are certain issues that as we talk about them, you have to take into account. That, that could become back, you're going to have to, you know, pull that information back down. So be prepared for that. You may, you may be asked for that. So that's just something we need to be aware of. It doesn't mean there's no, you're, we're, we're not going to stop anybody's free right of speech here, although we are going to protect the, the confidential data that we cannot talk about. But we're, we're still giving people elected or not elected the, the right for freedom of speech. That's something we're not taking back. I'm reading that right correctly.
You, you are a council member and I think it's a very good way of putting it. It's, it's that with that, i- if you choose to speak in those forums and in, in the social media, you may have an obligation to be able to pull out that information and produce it. Uh, should it be requested and should it be deemed a public record? That's all.
Okay.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Grant, um, for going over this. I have, um, I know I had reached out with you with some questions of my own, um, in regards to my, in my different Facebook pages and whether, whether or not to do certain Facebook pages. And so I have a question on what I feel like is a gray area here. Um, if I share a post that's been done by the city to my page, um, to my personal page just because, just as a, this was information, I don't really comment on it. Am I therefore creating something on my personal page that would need to be watched for public records? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, if all you're doing is, yeah, in, in other words. Yeah, if all you're doing is, yeah, in other words, cities have, yeah, for example, the city's holding an event at a park when, you know.
Correct. And if I share that to my personal page, am I creating something because that is my personal page?
That you, it is a gray area, I would say probably not, but I wouldn't, you know, it certainly is possible that somebody might argue the opposite. So I, you know, I don't think typically, it's not, again, looking at the testing, it's not required of you, but all you're doing is reconvening information as opposed to, you know, to, to creating, you're not creating something new that record already exists. If it's, if it's a, if it's a something the city created. So it's probably less likely for that reason, but not out of the realm of possibility that somebody might ask for your post.
Okay, perfect. And well, and I usually do try to make sure I put this on my campaign, Facebook and not my personal Facebook. And I did, right after I was appointed, I did put a disclaimer that my Facebook, my regular Facebook was my personal Facebook and does not represent the city or any opinions of, of anything to do with city council. So I did put that on a disclaimer on there, but I do use my campaign page and had wanted to do a actual city council member page because a lot of, like, the representatives have them and, like, county council members have them. So, and wanted details on what I would need to do if I did that. So thank you for trying to tackle and address that, so.
Other questions at this point? Okay, I guess we'll move on. I do want to spend a few minutes talking about the statement of values there. That is something that's been in the, in the manual. I did want to add, propose adding a, an updating sentence to kind of tie the concepts together by stating that in performing the duties on behalf of the city, council members will endeavor to demonstrate the values of respect, honesty and trust, those are in the statement of values. I did provide you all with a complete copy of the, of the, of the manual. And Exhibit C is where the statement of values and the rules of conduct are listed. And my understanding is that when this was written, and if Director Todd's still available, was, he might be able to speak to this as well. But this was something that was signed every, biannually by members of council. And one of the questions I would pose for council is whether this is a document that you want, you want to keep having and also signing. I don't know if that tradition of having it signed biannually is continued or not. So it's a question I'm looking for some feedback from council on.
I'll defer to Mark. I remember signing it, I thought it was annually, but Mark may remember better. It was a ceremonial thing, we signed it each year, it was kind of our commitment to each other to not be too obnoxious. I think once this governance manual got put in place, somehow we got out of the mode of signing that because it was part of the governance manual, we'd adopted the manual. So it wasn't explicitly that we quit honoring that, we just weren't celebrating it. But Mark has been around after more elections than I have, so Mark may remember better.
Yeah, we've kind of gotten away from it. You articulated it as, well, we had the, once we formed the manual, people were given a copy, but we kind of got away from reviewing it like we did. I think it's good to review it.
I think the one that's in the manual was like 2011, I think that's the last time we signed it. I don't think it was ever signed after that, was it, Mark?
Oh, really? Okay. So the question is, is it something the council would like to, a tradition the council would like to renew? And if so, is there, are you comfortable with the statement of values and the rules of conduct as currently written in the, in the document?
I think it's good as is.
I say we either, we either all sign it every year or we just change the language to say that each council, each council member will sign it each time they're sworn in.
Yeah, I think signing it when you're sworn in is fine, but I, I don't, I think it's not necessarily a bad document to visit occasionally, just refresher. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it, but discussions like what we're having right now, technology and the changes, and I'm sure more changes will be coming, there'll be a new challenge in 12 months from now. So it's probably good to visit it somewhat regularly.
And Grant, just to clarify, what would be attached as Exhibit C? That, is that the document we developed with the prior city manager in 2016 or 17? That's up on each one of our, on the dice?
It is the statement of values and rules of conduct. And if there's a, it would be, then you would have a place for everyone to sign. Councilmember Morgan, then Mayor Protem.
I like the idea of having a new tradition of signing this each year and possibly if there are new provisions that change or with state legislature or with our city or technology, we can address it at that time. It kind of keeps it a living document that's moving and everyone's on the same page for.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. What I was gonna say, I'm not sure of this section, but isn't there a section in our governance manual that says we're supposed to have a study session at the beginning of every year where we go over, once again, the city manager and council form of government, how all our roles are supposed to work? I was wondering if that would be a place that we should put this? And I'm not sure, I mean, if everybody wants to sign it, that's fine. But I was thinking that that would be a perfect place to go over this at that time when we're, when we're going over, I just don't remember, I know I've read that, I just don't remember which section I've read that in.
Yeah, I believe it, yeah, it's, it's triggering, I think maybe in Article Eight.
Yeah, because I feel like this would be something that would be perfect for us to revisit at that same time that we are reiterating for ourselves how our form of government works and what our roles and responsibilities are.
Yeah, my recollection over the last eight years is that every two years, our first meeting in January, the agenda is relatively short when we swear in the new or returning council members. So maybe we just add language to reflect that we'll do this every two years when the council members are sworn in.
And you hold your council leadership elections?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. We'll make that addition. Okay. Okay, this is in Section 3.10 and I think it's a slight change here. And that is, this talks about your obligations when you're representing the city on various regional bodies that you are obligated to advocate the position that the council has taken as a whole, rather than advocating a position that you yourself may or may not, may agree with it. So it's, it's recognizing that when you're appointed to a regional position, your obligation is to articulate the position of the, of the council. Did want to add one additional phrase, which is, we talk about these obligations are embedded in city policy, but we also, there's been some discussion, I believe, the Mayor Protem was talking about considering, you know, how we might address, how the city might address articulating its interest to legislative bodies and the legislature. And that one way to do that might be by issuing an interest statement, identifying what your, what, what the city's position may be on key issues before the legislature or Congress. So I wanted to add that as an option, if the, if council decides to go in that direction and, and prepare an interest statement.
That's, that's kind of difficult because isn't the interest going to change with, with every elected body?
It does, and typically, a number of city councils adopt an interest statement on legislative policies or legislative agendas annually. They're usually prepared in advance of the legislative session starting so that when council members have an opportunity either to meet with elected officials, such as your state legislative delegation or your congressional delegation, you have sort of the sheet music of the council's positions on various issues there that you can use as a basis for advocacy, either regionally or at the state level.
I don't disagree with that, I just don't know if this is the right vessel to get us there, does that make sense? I mean, I, I support the idea of having the advocate or liaise for the elected body in Olympia. But I don't know, I'm open to whatever, whatever anybody else has to say, I don't really see the need here.
Councilmember Bries, is your hand back up? I'm sorry, Councilmember Morgan, is your hand back up or is it still?
Oh, yes, it is. So I think if we are going to proceed with the lobbying efforts, that this interest statement might kind of give them a framework of what things to look for in Olympia. So it kind of connects together our lobbying efforts with the, the council and the city's agenda.
Mayor Protem, then Director Todd?
Yeah, I think it's extremely important that we have a legislative agenda and with that, the interest statement for the whole council. So that when anyone, you know, I specifically want to make sure that I'm representing, you know, we are all a team, you know, we always say it takes four of us, it's not just what I want. And so I want to make sure anytime that we are working with them on what we want at the legislature, that I have a formal document that our council has approved, this is what our important issues are, this is what we're working for, and, and this is what we want. So there's no doubt, there's no gray area, you know that you are working for the whole team and not yourself, and I, I would like to have that formalized personally.
Director Todd?
I was gonna say, my experience is this has been a problem in the past. And it, and Mayor Protem is exactly right, it's nice to have that position spelled out. But there's been instances where legislators called me when I was in a council position and said, I'm hearing this from one council member and this from another council member, what is the city's position? And if we have conflicting interactions with our legislators, sometimes you get nothing. So it's important we speak with one voice, and I think that Grant properly has put that in here because it's not a policy issue, it's not a budget issue, it's not a CFP. It is our interest in terms of advocacy for a particular issue in front of the legislature. Like, it's a good place to put it in, I think it would clarify it. Thanks.
And just, just to be clear, this isn't, this doesn't just apply to the legislature, you know, I think I've expressed this before, serving on SCT, you know, and there's been issues that I felt were policy issues that I don't want and feel comfortable opining myself on. I brought them to the full council, so I'm representing the position of the city. I don't know if other cities have this policy, but on SCT, there have been issues that I felt that the council members on those from other cities, representing their cities, weren't representing the viewpoints of the majority of their council, representing their own opinion. So I think it's important to have a policy that says when we're representing, not just in Olympia, but on these bodies, that we're trying our best to make sure we're not representing our own interests or our own opinions, but representing what the council's direction is. Councilmember Steckler, you had a comment or a question?
I like this idea, I love the interest statement. I did also like Grant's comment about an annual interest statement so that it's current and just updated every year to make sure that we're, we're still on the same track. Is there anyone, I thought that was a great idea, is anyone opposed to making this an annual interest statement?
We weren't talking about an annual interest statement, we're talking about annually going through the mission and values, reaffirming those, that's different than, these interest statements are going to vary by year to year.
Right, and I thought Grant's recommendation was make this an annual interest statement. This is the 2021 interest statement.
Yeah, I think they're two different things, Mayor. And, and, and I think Councilmember Steckler is correct, and I think that's what the Mayor Protem had in mind as well, which was to go through this exercise annually. And certainly, the mayor's suggestion of including other regional issues as well as state issues is an important one because you all serve on various bodies, whether it's the WIRA or community transit or others, the homeless county-related organizations. So this is a good place to kind of house all these, these positions to the extent that you can identify them ahead of time.
I just thought that was a nice point of clarification to make sure that this is, represents an annual interest statement on behalf of council.
That's where I was at with it too, John.
Okay, just to be, yeah, for the legislature, that was, I think, the intent of Stephanie's proposals, that we do this annually so that we are all on the same page at the beginning of the year with what the policy is going to be. My point on the interest statements was for local boards, it may be an issue by issue thing that we're not determining upfront at the beginning of the year like we do with.
Certainly can be a living document, that's, that's for sure. And it certainly, issues will come up during the course of the year where the positions, where it may be necessary to have a discussion to reach a position for the, for the city. I don't have much more, I've just got a couple more slides here and we'll move on. We're now in sections, in Article Six, and a lot of what we did with Article Six was we did some housekeeping to rearrange things. The discussion about the role of the city attorney, for example, had been in Section Three, but all the other staff and administration was discussed in Section Six. It seemed to make sense to move that discussion into, into Section Six. This is a slight change in language. There's a section about best practices for addressing citizen complaints. And there was some suggestion that maybe just a slight changing of wording here, but the focus is to, the preferred practice is to get the citizens into direct contact with the appropriate department head or the city manager. So the, this is more style than substance on that change. And then the last one is in, in Section 6.106, where we were trying to update the methods by which presentations are made to council. Haven't seen too many overhead projections lately. So the idea here was simply to, to update to the more current technology of PowerPoints and using video clips or the internet, and you've seen presentations recently where the internet was used so that we can just be a little more up to date. So this is more of a housekeeping function than anything else. That's my last slide, and as we said before, I've got some, your, your, some comments that we received and will add and make those changes when we present it to you again. And then also, just to see if there were any other questions or comments before we closed out on other parts of the, of the document. Any final questions, comments?
Thank you, Grant, for your work on that. So it sounds like we have one more substantive study session in next month and then we'll try to wrap it up the month following with looking at actual, an actual full document.
Great, okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, item F, the only thing on the consent agenda tonight is the council meeting minutes of February 23rd, 2021. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move. Second.
Second. Got me.
If it was in favor, please say aye.
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 Did anyone abstain? The consent agenda is approved. Under reports, the only thing I have to report is, after consulting with the Mayor Protem and city attorney and city manager, signing on to a letter that the county council, county executive is submitting to the state with regard to House Bill 1152, create public health districts throughout the state and put some limitations and changes on the existing health boards. The executive has some concerns about it, we reviewed the letter and because they needed a response before five o'clock after reviewing it between the four of us, we decided it was worthwhile to join on with the county executive's objections to the legislation as it's currently introduced, so. You can find the bill online, I've been looking at it today, so it's House Bill 1152. That, I think that's all I had tonight. Reports, Mayor Protem, any report tonight?
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Bond?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to apologize in advance, but this, I didn't get a chance to respond earlier. We moved on too quickly, but I want to just clarify something because it's driving me nuts. It was stated earlier with tremendous conviction that we are not employees of the city, we are volunteers, we are given a stipend to cover our expenses. Don't take my word for it because I'm just a doofus. Webster describes a volunteer defines as a person who freely offers to take part in enterprise or tasks. a person who works without being paid. Mill Creek Municipal Code, Chapter 2.08 specifically addresses the fact that we are, in fact, employees of the city, and we are compensated with a salary. If you want to be compensated for any expenses rate related to your official duty, you would go to Section 2.08.030 and follow the directions there to get compensation above and beyond your salary that you are issued as an employee. Thank you.
Councilmembers Steckler, any report tonight?
I do, I do. Couple of requests. I, we'd like to make a request for an update on what's happening with Karen Reed and the Dobson Remler properties. I was under the, specifically, I was under the understanding that our next step was to review together council recommendations. And I noticed on our, our calendar that we're not coming together again until, I think, the end of April on, on these properties, which was quite a ways away. And so I wanted to get an update on that, because I did think, I thought of my records, this was our meeting to actually review our recommendations. I was probably wrong, but just wanted to get an update on that. And then I also wanted to get an update on what are we doing? I heard a rumor about the citizens survey or something. I just wanted to get an update on that, because I'm not sure what, what's going on with that. Just wanted to get an update on Karen Reed and the activities with Dobson Remler, okay? And I also had, was there an update I could on the USS Ralph Johnson? I'd asked for some type of activity to welcome them back into port. I hadn't heard anything back yet on that. That was a few meetings, a few, a while back. And also, I did want to request from Director Gimzo. I, I still waiting for some answers to my financial questions from a couple meetings ago. So just letting you know, I'm still looking for, for that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Where are we in the order? Are we at Councilmember Briel? No, Councilmember Cavallari, any report tonight?
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Bribles?
I do have a report for tonight. The, earlier this evening, I attended the Snohomish County Town Hall on COVID-19 vaccines. I just wanted to share some of the information that was provided there. 120K doses have been delivered for our 830,000 residents. These are all rough numbers. It's not, I didn't give the precise numbers. About 30,000 of our county residents have gotten both doses of the two-dose vaccines. The recently announced as approved Johnson &amp; Johnson single-dose vaccine has not yet been delivered to Snohomish County. While it will be a part of the planned distribution in the future, no doses are currently projected to be arriving in the next few weeks. The county task force is confident that they are now capable of distributing up to 50,000 doses per week, though the supply is currently still short of that number. And I did have one question, much like Councilmember Steckler. One other point that I wanted to ask was, it had been noted that he would be seeking public input on, throughout the process on the Dobson Remler Turco properties. And someone asked me the question of, well, how do we get that? What, what form will that take? And I wasn't sure whether that'd be, say, a written survey mailed to each resident, event which they're invited to, an online poll, something else. So I'd love to hear more about that, so that I could actually answer a specific question that I received and probably so that all of our residents and any other interested parties may know about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Morgan, any report tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. No reports.
City Manager, you reporting any staff reports?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The only planned staff report this evening is from Chief Young, talking about a recent 4-3 decision in the Supreme Court, Washington State Supreme Court, State versus Blake. Before that, though, I just wanted to just very quickly address some questions. With regard to the progress that we're making on the DRCC, our next study session is scheduled for April 13. What's happening in the interim period and what happened last week and what I foreshadowed in my report at the last council meeting is that we have met with a firm that can assist us in conducting a survey. We're working through the terms of the agreement, as well as the specifics of how it'll be performed. The goal being that we would be able to engage the community in a dialogue, albeit much more truncated, but similar to that which has already occurred with city council. And that when we came back on the 13th, in addition to a couple of other aspects of the work being developed, we would have the data from that survey already completed. I am in correspondence as we joined with Director Todd, myself, Finance Director Gimzo, Karen Reed, to put together that work and to meet with this firm to vet them. So we're working on not only the details of securing that agreement, but also then getting the survey underway. We intend to work with Kristin Grassmussen to publicize and increase communities' participation. So we're also co-formulating a campaign in conjunction with that survey going out to maximize participation. With regard to the USS Ralph Johnson, Councilman Steckler, I'm expecting an update on Thursday. You know, what I will do is report out to you, as well as the remainder of council, where we're at in that, that progress report. So appreciate the request for the update. With regard to State versus Blake, before Chief Young speaks, it really is rocking the law enforcement community throughout the state as it relates to what, you know, many of us think might have been a legislative oversight in the way the drug law was written, it didn't require a requisite mental intent to be explicitly stated and as an element of the offense. And as a result, we are all working to adjust. And Chief Young will now let me talk about the impact of this decision on our department, but also some of the technical aspects of the decision that I think as legislators and policymakers you should be aware of. So without further ado, Chief Young, if you could get us started, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. I'm gonna share my screen here, so that you can see a presentation that, that we put together for you. Hopefully it'll work correctly. All right, can everybody see that?
That's it, Chief. Here it goes. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So with State v. Blake, I just wanted to run through some numbers with you real quick. So from January 1st of 2018 through February 24th of 2021, the City of Mill Creek Police Department processed approximately 59 drug-related cases. So as you can see on there, at least I hope you can anyway, that we separated it between felony and misdemeanor. So of those cases, we had nine that were possession with intent to distribute those, those drugs. As a result of the Blake decision, I immediately directed our officers to stop making arrests for simple possession, which included possession of drug paraphernalia. The reason for this was because if the court invalidated the simple possession statute, then it didn't make much sense for us to seize items of drug paraphernalia that were associated with simple possession or personal use. It, it has no impact on how we're impounding drug paraphernalia that is either found or turned into us by a citizen. And one other thing that I want to make note of here is that our policy and procedure has not changed with regard to how we're going to process possession with intent to distribute or manufacture.
Chief, for those who may not be familiar, could you just briefly summarize what, what the court ruled?
Yeah, I'm getting to that right now.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I want to show you the statute real quick. So with the, with the RCDW for simple possession, it's a strict liability statute, meaning that the legislature was silent with regard to establishing a mental state. And there's four mental states that we have to look at, which is knowingly, intentionally, negligently, or recklessly, and then with criminal negligence. So with that being said, this statute here basically says that a person should know that it is unlawful to carry a controlled substance. Now, moving into this, on the 25th of February, the Supreme Court examined whether or not the simple possession statute violated the due process clauses of the US and Washington State Constitution. And when, what they held on this was that it did, in fact, violate the due process clauses of both. So what they did was, they said, we are saying that we cannot, the legislature cannot criminalize constitutionally this type of non-conduct without establishing a knowingly mental state to possess a controlled substance. So what that, what this does effectively is it renders simple possession invalid, but it does not do anything with regard to the manufactured delivery or possession with intent to distribute any sort of a controlled substance. So again, for our impact, it's going to be very, very minimal in terms of how we're going to be processing the possession with intent. We are currently looking at how we're going to address prior drug offenses that were possession with intent, that were basically pled down or reduced to simple possession. We did, in fact, have one particular case over this past weekend where another agency contacted a person with a warrant out of Mill Creek, where it was $100,000 bond, but it said simple possession. We did a lot of further research on it and found out that the original charge was possession with intent. However, given the fact that it was reduced down to simple possession, we elected to not address that particular warrant at this time. We're still waiting for the prosecutor's office to come back and tell us what, what direction they want to go on that. So again, the impact of the decision really is that we cannot take any enforcement action for violations of simple possession. And basically, that anyone that has had a previous conviction in, in any Washington court, their, their conviction will be vacated, and they're not required to comply with any other provisions of the court order. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Chief, do we know statewide how many cases are involved, implicated here?
We don't. That's one of the, the issues that all law enforcement agencies are looking into. And when we made our inquiry to just Snohomish County to find out how many cases we had, they said, we'll get back to you, because everybody's trying to find that out. But we do not know exactly how many cases.
Anyone have any other questions? Okay, thank you for that update, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. And with that, we will conclude our report. Thank you.
And we will move on to conclude the meeting with audience communication. Would anyone like to speak with the council tonight? Barbara, name, address, in three minutes, please.
Barb Piddle, 1401, 144th Place, Southeast Mill Creek. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Matthew Combs for a thorough presentation of the Public Works Department. It is beneficial to all of us, especially as a regular citizen, to see a list of all the various responsibilities of the department. Great job. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the council? Mike, I might have to have you take your yellow jacket down out of your office, because it makes it look like your hand, your left hand, is up the entire meeting. Hearing no one else wanting to address the council tonight, we will be adjourned and we will reconvene next week. Same bat time, same bat place.
Good. Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night, all. Have a good week.
Too. Good night.